Completed her tr- and Carol brought not only the rich history of Auburn with her, but the voice of reason and experience to some of the younger members. So, as you know, you are very lucky to have Carol as part of your staff. And here is a copy, no, it's not a copy. This is Carol's certificate of completion. And her partnership pin. So, continuing the tradition of, um, MPCL in Auburn.
Congratulations and thank you for your hard work, both of you.
Thank you.
It was such a treat for me. So, any questions from anyone? I understand I'll be back here next year because you have another coach in training, Tara Knight. And so, I'll see you again next year.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
The program certainly pays dividends. Other communications that members have received they'd like to share? We have received one from Laura Garcia regarding her comments on the task force that we've all received, and that will go into the minutes. She has expressed some concerns, but also just reiterated the various meetings. I think there were five meetings that the task force went through, so we have that documented. It'll be part of the minutes. Those who would like to read that, they'll have that up on the website when we file the minutes.
Mr. Chair, is it possible that you could, it's not very long, could you read it so that people-
Not very long, it's four pages.
Oh, I thought it had one and a half pages.
No, that, it was a four-page statement.
Okay.
So, it'll be part of that.
All right. Because I don't know if those here under-
That was just her, I think you're looking at just her email.
It's an email that I have.
Just the email.
You want to read the email?
She had attached to that a document that will be part of the minutes.
Yeah.
That's where it'll be.
Okay.
So, we also have for this evening, the consent agenda, which is the approval of the agenda for this evening, the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting on June 6th, and then the certificated contract nominations, of which there was an addendum of an additional three, I believe it was, that'll be added to that list. So, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Need further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. We move on to public participation. Do we have anyone in the audience care to share a comment or two of something that is not on the agenda? You have an open mic at this time. We don't need anyone to sing, but-
We'll have a student.
It's an open mic. Are you getting instructions from Mr. Horn? Is that-
That will support.
It's all right, good deal.
Get your name and address, and then you can start.
Chris Clucci, 97 Golf Street. And I want to be talking about why EL should have American Sign Language. ELHS offers French, Spanish, and Latin, but what about those who are deaf or hard of hearing, or know someone who is? We often put them to the side, yet think about what they are supposed to do. I think we should teach them American Sign Language, also anyone else who wants to learn. It is the third most-used language in the US and Canada. It is the main form of communication for many deaf Americans. American Sign Language is used by 5,000 people to communicate in the US. Since we know how many people communicate using ASL, not only would it help you communicate with the deaf and hearing impaired, it would help you communicate with those who have autism because some with autism can struggle with spoken language. And you can also communicate with those who have cerebral palsy, Down Syndrome, and more. One in 25 Americans have hearing loss in at least one ear. And three out of every 1,000 children are deaf, are born deaf or hard of hearing. Even though American Sign Language is becoming more popular, some may see it as strange because most of us do not encounter it in our day-to-day life. American Sign Language is, uh, American Sign Language is used by a lot of people. It is used by people who are autistic, developmentally delayed, even hearing people use American Sign Language. This shows how many people you communicate with if you know sign language. People who learn sign language can then communicate with those in the US who are deaf and/or are hearing impaired. If we teach kids and young adults ASL now, then in the future, more adults will know ASL. Then we'll be able to use this scale to their advantage. You can, you can have a lot of advances in a job if you learn sign language. One of the benefits of knowing ASL is it gives you a way to enjoy the richness of the deaf community. It also leads to higher reading levels in kids. When you know ASL, you can become a better communicator and listener. American Sign Language would give students the opportunity to communicate comfortably with those who are hard of hearing or deaf. It is a visual language, so it would be sharpening your eyes. You can make a difference, improve your nonverbal skills, it is growing in usage. It may even get you hired faster. The counterclaims are, and Mr. Horn said this, "There is a shortage of foreign language teachers, even fewer teachers that want to teach sign language." Out of those who do not want, who do want to teach, sign language, there is a select few who are going to be ASL-certified to teach it, and even fewer that are also teacher-qualified. I know we have dedicated instructors that love the children, that may volunteer to learn on their own or in a seminar. First, we could find volunteers that would like to learn ASL. Second, it could be funded as a foreign language to ease budget concerns. In summary, American Sign Language should be taught. It will allow us to communicate with more people. It will enhance the classroom experience of deaf people. It would also benefit the lives of hearing people. You will have enhanced experience for audiologists and law enforcement and many others. I would like ASL to be taught and used in schools to enhance everyone's lives.
Thank you.
Any questions? Don't leave yet. Anyone have questions or?
No, I just have a comment. My grandchildren, their first language was ASL. Because we found that, you know, with looking at the research, it became easier for them to understand language in general, so they picked up on language much more quickly than I know my own babies and my siblings did. So, you know, I think that it's a valid language, and I agree with you. I think we should teach ASL.
Have you done research that says ASL can be a world language as according to the state requirement? That's interesting. You'd need to come up, but you're welcome to come up and join, yes, and add to the conversation.
I don't know about state requirements for high school, but I teach at Central Maine Community College, and we do ASL as a foreign language.
Awesome, yes.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, very important.
Any further questions? Very good, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Hi. Stacy Fournier, 47 Cherryvale Circle. Sorry, I'm not booted up here. This won't be a surprise, but I'm here once again to speak against PBL. And just to be clear, I'm sharing an overwhelming consensus among Auburn parents that PBL is doing a major disservice to our children. There has been a lot of discussion in the last couple of weeks, more so than ever amongst the parents. We are being notified of summer programs. So, I want to say, my son was what I would have considered an A student in elementary school and in 7th grade. He was the only student from East Auburn Community School that was invited to the Portland Math Meets, meaning an excellent math student. All year in 7th grade, he's been at or above teacher pace and is receiving the highest achievable scores on all homework assignments and tests. So, as far as we were concerned, no worries. All good, right? Wrong. I had noticed a lot of anxiety in AJ in the last few weeks because he had a fear of not finishing 7th grade math. I would ask, "Are you behind?" He would say, "No, I'm above teacher pace." Then I'd say, "Don't worry about it, no worries." Yet, two weeks ago, completely by surprise, we received a flyer at home explaining summer math. I also asked AJ, or excuse me, AJ's teacher, Mr. Mainz, when as far as to suggesting to AJ that he take summer school this summer. AJ said there are, I also asked AJ, "Does this mean that all the other students will not finish 7th grade math?" He said, "Oh, no, no, there are a few," key word, "few," students that have finished 7th grade math. They're way ahead of the teacher, like five units or more. I did reach out to AJ's teacher, and he did confirm that AJ was currently at teacher pace. That is all I got, with no other explanation. In fact, I have not received any kind of confirmation that AJ is actually enrolled in the summer math program, even though I returned the flyer the very next day. So, this is my understanding. The kids that finish 7th grade math basically taught themselves with little guidance from the teacher. They watch a YouTube video, and only sometimes they, the teacher will teach a lesson. Then the kids do the worksheets, take the test, and move on. My son is a proven intelligent student, as confirmed by his previous teachers and report cards. However, he's a lot of anxiety about getting things right, a perfectionist to a fault. We're working on that. He will not, he needs confirmation and guidance from the teachers that he is on the right path. He will not try to learn on his own. I am talking about math, and to me, something just does not add up. The only way our kids are finishing 7th grade math is that they are teaching themselves or relying on parents or tutors to get them ahead of teacher pace, way ahead of teacher pace. Again, no pun intended, but we are failing our students, or, as you all might say, he is not proficient in 7th grade math. I need an explanation as to why I need to get my kid to school twice a week, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM on Tuesdays and Thursdays for the next four weeks. I would like you all to remember my last talk in May. I work full-time. Fortunately, I have a willing village who loves my son to the moon and back and will do anything for him, so they will help my husband and I. But many families do not have this village. Do they leave work early, go in late? How many employers will accept this week after week, just so we can make sure our kids are proficient in math, English, or whatever the subject is? To be clear, this is indicative of a failure with PBL, not the teacher, as this summer flyer, ma- excuse me, summer math flyer, went out to the entire student population at AMS. AJ's actually excited about going to summer school and does not see this in a negative way whatsoever, and I'm not going to change that. He's excited to see his friends, as he is not eligible for the CLC program this summer, as he was last year. They changed the eligibility requirements without notifying any of the parents. That's a whole different conversation for another night. So, AJ's going to take summer math. What I want to know from this school committee is what are you going to do to fix this? And I'm not talking about more committees, task forces, and meetings. A change needs to happen and needs to happen now. By theory, AJ will be starting 8th grade math before the summer is up. What happens next year at the beginning of school? Is he ahead, so he does nothing until the teacher catches up to him? Do I need to pay a private tutor out of my own pocket that I earned, working full-time? Do I, I'm sorry, it makes me very upset. AJ is not going to be taking summer math next year. I can tell you that right now. I've already started looking into sending him to other schools out of district because you people are not listening to us. This isn't about grading. This isn't about a 100%. The system is failing our students. They're not proficient. What are we going to do? I need answers. I don't need an answer right now, but I expect an answer, a formal explanation with, in a meeting with AMS staff, the school administration, and reps from the school committee, giving my husband and I reassurances that my son is receiving the education that he deserves in every way possible. And he is not doing that right now. Thank you.
Your car was? We'll see that you get a response, as you asked for.
Celeste Bodett, 124 Well Lake Street. I'm not sure what's going on with that situation, and I don't have any of the details, but I just want to just clarify. My daughter, I have two daughters that went to EL. So, my daughter Grace, who just graduated in the top 10, not on the PBL track, also participated in summer math. It was a positive experience. So, I don't, I'm not pretending to know the situation, but I'm not sure that all summer math programs are looked upon as negative. So, she did participate in the summer math more than one summer, and she did, she's on the 100-point scale, and she graduated number six in her class. So, it was a positive experience for us.
Thank you. Excuse me, you got one, yes, someone's behind you. We'll have your second opportunity.
Hi, guys. Matt Heineman here, 1338 Pownell Road, Auburn. I don't have a speech prepared for you, but would like to give you a little bit of perspective, maybe of, maybe from the other side. I have two children, one in middle school and one in high school, and both participating in the PBL program right now, currently. Both have also attended the summer math program, one year out of my own request and the following year at their request. They enjoyed it, they did find that it was a positive experience, and this year, my daughter Lindy Heineman is actually not going to attend the summer program in any capacity because she wants the seat to be available for someone else. There are only a limited number of seats. I can tell you that from my experience, the PBL program has allowed my children to excel and to grow and be ahead of where they typically would be with the general curriculum that we had before. So, I'm very appreciative of the program, I support the program, and I'm also hearing overwhelming support for the program. So, I'm sure that while we can find an overwhelming negative support, there's also a reciprocal support for that, and typically, the loudest voice is those that are not in agreement with the current system. I think people are much more likely to voice a complaint than they are a compliment. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate those balanced comments, thank you. And you have a response, please?
I just wish... I'm a very involved parent. I'm a rare parent, I understand that. My son has ADD, we work through it, we meet with the school staff at least three times every year. To be clear, ADD, not ADHD, he does not have behavioral issues or what have you. It is the, you know, steadfast, true, can't-pay-attention type of situation. The lack of communication or assumption that we were on track to finish and to get a flyer at home and have him talk to my son without reaching out to us. And he, the, once I reached out to the teacher, it took a week and a half for him to get back to me, and I had to send an email to the team after that to get a response as to what is going on. And I just, it's one thing to want to take summer math and excel, it's a whole nother thing to have to take summer math to finish 7th grade math. There's a difference. There's a huge difference there. I'm all for kids wanting to advance themselves in the summer and be better, but my son feels like he has to take this because he did not finish. He was in tears about this. And like I said, he's thinking it's a positive, we're going with that, I'm not making it a negative for him, we're going, but there's a difference between wanting to take it and finishing in the top 10 of the class, and I'm, that's great. And there's a whole, and I hope maybe next year, that's what he wants to do, okay? And that's his decision. But I don't want him to have to take it because he didn't meet the, finish the curriculum for the year. There's a difference. That's all I have to say.
Just a question.
Stacy, I will call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Because we haven't had a discussion on this.
Right.
So, I need to talk to you tomorrow, and then I can find some information that may help, maybe there's-
Okay, I would also like some kind of confirmation that he's actually enrolled in the program.
Well, I will call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Connaughtee, and I live at 8 Lothrup Street. Summer math, as far as I know, every single skid in every school got a paper. It's not that you didn't finish the thing. Anyone who is there, it's a goal to move either ahead of pace or get back on pace. I don't know if you're on pace or not, but if you're, the only reason you'd be required to take summer math is, there's not even a requirement to take summer math, as far as I know. In fact, I am personally enrolled in summer math by my own choosing. Anyone who got the flyer is everyone. Because if you feel forced by that, I don't know how to tell you that you're not, because every single person from 7th grade to 12th grade should have gotten that flyer. I got that flyer personally on the, it's not something special. Also, proficiency-based learning has helped me be able to get stuff half-done on, at my own pace. I can learn things, I, I used to, when in my previous years, I wouldn't get stuff done on perfect time. I would miss a day and, or I would fail a test, and I'd have to redo a bunch of different papers rather than just doing the final assignment. Anyone who learns by the end of the period where you're learning it gets to succeed. But on power school, you have to get every single assignment done to succeed. If you don't know things from the first assignment on, you can fail. I have gotten mostly frozen screens on my assignments in high school. In middle school and in previous grades, I have had, I have gotten Bs and some occasionally As. My grades have improved significantly in the past year is due to this grading system.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kate Dion, the lucky parent of that guy. 8 Lothrup Street, Auburn. I am both a parent of a middle schooler and a high schooler. I'm also a full-time educator for over 25 years. I teach college, community college, and so I come to proficiency-based learning from several different perspectives. One, having a student who was very, very high achieving all along, enough to skip a grade, who has thrived under proficiency-based learning, in part because it allowed him to, for him, it was, and I recognize this is not true for all students, but he's a very, he can occasionally be an anxious kid, and it has allowed him to focus on, have I learned the material? And if he focuses on, have I learned the material, and he has met that target, then he's done what he needed to do. He knows what he needs to do to get a four. So, it's been a very successful system for him. And then for my other student who has been, on occasion, been as much as two years behind in school, is now ahead and moving into AP classes. And a large part of that has been proficiency-based learning, that he can move at his own pace, that he has learning challenges that means some types of homework were difficult for him, we had to have accommodated homework. That has all been able to go away under proficiency-based learning, as long as he can demonstrate that he has met the target. And it's been very illuminating as a parent and as a teacher myself to see him develop enormous executive functioning skills and planning skills in trying to figure out when he's going to get things done. And there were some times at the beginning of the year where it was a little rocky. And then by the end of the year, he's been, he's been awesome. He, I can't believe how much he has blossomed under this. He knows when he's ahead of pace. Partway through the spring, he realized that he wanted to get in to some higher-level courses next year. He started accelerating his pace in algebra and is now enrolling in summer math because he wants to, he's started geometry ahead and wants to get a whole class ahead so that he can get some extra done, because he knew he could stay ahead and get ahead that way. He knew that he could be in charge of figuring out what he needed to learn, and he went to the teacher when he needed to go to the teacher, and he got help when he needed to get help. As a college teacher, I've taught at a range of institutions. I've taught at CMCC for over 10 years now. I've taught at Boston College, I've taught at UMass Amherst. And the biggest problem I see in my students, and I teach a range of courses, but primarily freshman writing is the one that I have in common against all those schools, is students who come in and who don't know how to be in charge of their own learning. Because we can't hold their hand in college the way that teachers get to hold their hand in elementary school. And gradually, students have to become more independent. And I think proficiency-based learning does make for a rocky period of time for some students, but it moves that into a space where they're home with their parents, who can help them, they have teachers who see them every day or every other day, as opposed to at college, where they end up failing their classes, wasting their money and their parents' money and their time, and getting sent home, so that they can't come back in the spring. So, for me, I'm thrilled to see us doing proficiency-based learning, thrilled enough that I'm trying now to convince my colleagues to, for us to start a project, to see if we can explore ways to increase our use of something similar in our classes. And I know that I'm going to be doing it individually in my classes, because I've been amazed to see what a difference it's made for both my kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Hwanek, 134 Nottingham Road. I'm here tonight because I served on the task force, which apparently the recommendations of the task force will be presented later. I just wanted to be certain that it's on record that some of us had some issues with the task force, with the manner in which it was organized, with the way the meetings happened, with some of the outcome, or lack thereof. We were not permitted to give input into the formation of the surveys. I would have, and I know several other people would have formatted them differently. We would have made certain the questions were more clear and had been certain that the teachers could answer the surveys without fear of identification. We were not given the comments to review until two days before the vote, and what we got were excerpts, not the raw data. Apparently, there was identifying information on some of the surveys, parents talking about a child by name or putting a phone number on the survey. We still should have been able to see the raw data, rather than the pieces that were picked out and given to us. At the initial meeting, we were told that the purpose of the task force was to discuss, discuss the issues and concerns with PBL and proficiency-based education. We started off the task force discussing the platform for grading and power versus power school and the actual grading system, 0 to 100 versus 1 to 4. The task force recommended a return to the 0 to 100 grading and moving back to power school, the new version being power school plus, which incidentally has the capability of a dual grading system, which people should be aware of. The outcome should have been a foregone conclusion, given the data that was collected by the surveys, as imperfect as they were. Instead, we spent nearly 10 hours hashing all of this out. We could have directed this time and energy to other issues with PBL, such as the issue of kids taking retakes of their summary assessments, rewriting papers, no due dates for assignments, and dual grading, which will hopefully continue to be an, dual grading, which will continue to be an unnecessary burden for teachers. These topics are sore points for those of us opposed to this educational system and need to be addressed sooner, rather than- and need to be addressed sooner rather than later. Several of us on the task force feel we were thrown a bone. In fact, the outcome is exactly what we predicted and glaringly obvious. Unfortunately, the remainder of the concerns remain unaddressed. While I have agreed to spend time this summer reviewing comments from the surveys, I don't think it's a valuable use of my time. As I have read enough, heard enough at these meetings, in social media groups, in the schools from parents, from teachers, from students, and my own children, to conclude to... Enough to... I've heard enough to know what the remaining issues are. For anyone interested, I have the last two task force meetings recorded. I asked at the initial organizational meeting if our sessions could be taped. I was told yes. Unfortunately, I assumed that that meant that the school would tape for us, but they didn't. So, I bought a recorder and brought it and taped the final two meetings. Anyone interested in hearing the meetings just needs to let me know. I'm happy to share them. Addition, my last point, everyone listening tonight needs to be aware that while the task force, by a majority vote, recommended the return to 0 to 100 grading, a parent on the task force raised her concern that this would be a temporary measure and that once the hoopla died down, there would be a return to 1 to 4 grading. Two committee members, Mrs. Hayes and Mrs. Fortier, both said, "No, that's not going to happen." However, a few minutes later, Michelle McClellan, the assistant superintendent, clarified that she could not say that this wouldn't happen. There's the bone. This is scary. We've put in all this time, all of these surveys, concerned parents, and... Okay, you want to go back to 0 to 100? Maybe we're going to go back to 1 to 4. It was very upsetting to hear that. It is very upsetting to not be working further on these issues this summer. There is a lot more that needs to be done. The... I believe that the Senate in Augusta today tabled LD 1999, which is the... To repeal the proficiency-based diploma. I guess what I'm trying to say is that I am disheartened by the progress. I have put in hours and hours and hours into this, and it doesn't seem like it's doing any good. I can promise you I'm not going away. My husband and I had a conversation this week about looking into other school systems for our children, because their needs are not being met. Both of my kids have been enrolled in summer math. However, we don't even know when it starts, because we haven't gotten any confirmation that they're actually in it. We don't know when it starts, when it ends. The communication is poor. The fact that so many kids in ELA, in the high school, are going to be required to do summer English in order to pass for the year is disgusting and shows a real breakdown in the system, and I hope it will be addressed very quickly.
Thank you. Let this lady speak first.
Let this lady go first.
No, she's had one term.
Hi there. My name's Claire Nissenovich. I'm at 3 Jocelyn Street. I have a now 10th grader and a 7th grader. I just... I'll try to make my comments brief. My main feedback I wanted to give tonight is that I think it's certainly a positive step that you guys created the task force. I'm happy to see that dual grading will be starting next year. I think that'll be a huge improvement over what's happened this past year, given all the concerns. But I would say that I don't think the work is done. Just as an example, my son, who's going into 10th grade, he started at AMS in 7th grade. It was a new math program, the Mass Customized Learning, Go At Your Own Pace. He finished all his targets without lifting a finger. It wasn't challenging enough for him. I made those complaints at the time. What I found out later was that the same exact issue had happened the year prior with the class before him. And I've also learned that those same issues carry on after he's left. So, now I'm in the position of having another child about to start AMS next year. And I do not want to be going through the same different kid. Probably will have different issues. However, I don't want to be going through the same cycle again and again and feeling like the challenges aren't being heard. And the first step in addressing the challenges obviously is acknowledging them. And I think that's the beauty of a task force and getting parent input and transparency is let's label what the problems are, and there are still problems. I'm happy to hear that that other parent has had positive experiences with PBL. I think, you know, in the world of education, it's not one-size-fits-all, and what works for her children might not work for mine. In the case of the math, for instance, I know that there are kids, unlike my son, who didn't meet the targets and so had to go to summer math. So, there's an issue there. The Go At Your Own Pace does leave a lot up to children, and that's going to continue to be an issue, I think. And so, we need to address it as a district. And the one way I think you can do that is to keep the dialogue and the communication open between parents and figuring out, like, what are the continuing challenges? Because the dual grading will not address that issue. And yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Sharon?
Hi again, guys. Matt Heinman here, 1338 Powell Road, Auburn, Maine. I also served on the task force and had quite a different experience with the program. First, I'd like to say that with the varying degree of concerns throughout the community, I think we'd be foolish to think that we... A task force that's going to meet for two hours for a handful of meetings is going to solve all these problems, given the amount of time and, again, the diversity and the wide array of concerns. Not that any one of them can't be handled or tackled individually, but there are a varying number of concerns. Just listening here with the comments, I've noticed that we've got one student that excels, and then we've got one student that maybe doesn't. First of all, this is not a one-size-fits-all program. If it was, then we'd all be shoehorned into one curriculum. So, the ability for children to ebb and flow with their education as they grow and develop and learn new things and interact socially, I think is what makes this program what it is. We think back to the early 1900s, when there was one schoolhouse with maybe 14, 15 children, and one in high school and one in pre-K. So, I don't know that the system has failed. What I'd like to acknowledge is that on the task force, I think some of the negative aspects that are being promoted on social media right now are basically the fact that the task force was formed by a variety of people that submitted applications. There was a survey that was distributed prior to that to get a general consensus of what people felt about their current situation. Some of it was their familiarity with the grading system, the reporting platform. And those were taken up as our primary duties to address to begin with in our first few sessions. As Michelle described during the meeting, that this task force is not concluded. We're not finished with our work, and we were there to make recommendations based on several key issues that we felt, as a community, needed to be addressed before next school year. The amount of time that's even required to implement these changes is going to be very tight and very, I believe, straining on the administration and our 300-plus teachers that we have in the Auburn School District. So, kudos to those guys if they can pull it off. I think it's going to be beneficial. I was not, by the way, in support, for the record, in support of returning to the 0 to 100. I feel like it's extra work for the teachers and that it will provide this dual-grading platform, which was one of the major concerns, was the amount of time required to document and report these grades. I would like to offer up that if I had a recommendation to the school committee would be to provide more education to the public, whether it's in public forum, whether it's in webinars, seminars, YouTube videos for the parents, people that are engaged with their children's academics and education, to educate themselves on the program and what the program itself is offering our children, so that they can then speak some of the similar language that their children are hearing and participating in. What I am finding that people are disappointed with in the program is that they just don't understand. I use the term ignorant at the task force meeting, and everybody was taken aback and sort of shunned. And literally, I meant it by the exact description and definition of the word, is that there are a lot of people that just don't know what the program is about and why we have it and what the benefits could be for their children. So, like myself and some of the arithmetic that I learned as a child, I can't necessarily communicate on the same level with my children. I've had to do my own education or take my own time to learn some of the newer techniques so that I can communicate with them. This is no different. I would again like to thank the hard work of all of our citizens, our school department, the school district, and the people that put their entire careers and lives on the line for standing up for what they believe in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Hwanek, 134 Nottingham Road. I would just like to restate that lack of agreement does not equate ignorance or lack of understanding. I am well-versed, as are many of us who are opposed to PBL. We are well-versed in PBL, PBE, PBD, MCL, all of it. Some of us have testified in Augusta. Some of us have been attending these meetings for 15, 16 months now. So, to make it sound like another educational program to teach us about proficiency-based learning is quite insulting. Thank you.
Connaughton in 8 Lothrup Street. I heard a lot... Some people bring up the problem of language odds, how people are failing. I am in that class. I personally know some of the people who are failing. And I know several reasons why people are failing. One, the big problem was one of our essays didn't have a lot of time to finish, and people never revised, never did anything about it. They didn't fit... They were asked to finish it, and they said... And they just never did. They never even... There are people who haven't turned in some of their essays. And sure, there are kids who haven't passed essays and have to revise them. But that's exactly what we did with... Is do something new that you have to... Is it new that we have to revise our work if we fail it? It's... If you don't do your work quickly, you revise it. And people aren't... A lot of people aren't doing that, and that's why people are failing.
Thank you. Anyone else with more to add?
Hi.
Good evening.
Donna Sivony, 51 Grandview Avenue. I would like to actually specifically address a problem in the English department, and I won't mention names specifically, but there are significant issues, and they're related to the PBL, issues that we've been talking about for quite some time. The number of students failing freshman English is appalling. We're talking about high double digits, kids taking English over the summer because they have to, not because it's fun, not because it's an enrichment thing, because they have to to get a credit for this English class. I actually had a conversation at the end of March with an administrator about this issue and was told this was not the first time that person had heard about this, that the issue was known and was being worked on. So, I said, "Great, well, it's the end of March." This is the first time I started realizing what a serious issue this was. And was told, "Yep, working on it. We're going to put a support person in there." I said, "Well, great, because it's the end of March." And tick-tock. So, I followed up with an email, waited for a support... Got an email back saying, "Yep, we're on it. A support person will be joining the classroom. We understand... I understand there are issues." At that time, it's my understanding that across that class... Across the classes that were being taught by this person, there's a 90% failure rate. That's not a student failure. That is a teacher failure. That is a program failure. That's bad. And I followed up again with an email. I ask my daughter every day, "Is there a person in that classroom yet?" "Nope." Okay, followed up with an email. "There'll be someone next week. There have been some issues." "Great, I'm not going away. I'll follow up again." "Anybody in the class?" "Nope." "Well, there'll be somebody there tomorrow." "Nope." I followed up again, and now there's just no response. And you know what? An enormous number of students are not passing English and have to go and finish this class over the summer during the week that they're doing it just to get a credit. It's appalling. And this is, again, this is not that number of students who are not passing that class with a specific individual. That is not a student failure. That is a teacher failure. And I've been at Bates for nine years, and I will tell you that if any faculty member had a class failing like that, they would no longer have a job. If they had a 90% failure rate, that's a teacher problem. That's a faculty issue. And it needs to be addressed, and addressed now. This cannot happen. Thank you.
Hi, Kate Dion, 8 Lothrup Street again. I think one of the things that I'm noticing as I listen to all of this is that I'm not sure a lot of these things weren't happening before, but we didn't know they were happening. So, I didn't know which thing my kids didn't learn if they got a C in a class or a C on an assignment. And now, I can see what they learn and don't learn. And now, we can see when kids aren't learning something. And so, yes, this is a problem. These things are big problems, but I don't think they're new problems. I think they're problems, lots of them, that we had already, but we covered up by using letter grades that just passed people along. And so, I think all of these parental concerns are incredibly important, but I don't think they're necessarily all created by proficiency-based learning. Thank you.
Kim Taylor, 105 Beach Hill Road. I also don't want to dismiss the parent concerns, because when someone has concerns, they're legitimate, and we love our children. And so, we want them to have the best. I have a unique perspective in that I have a student, a child, who is 24, and he went through a traditional model, and there were struggles. There were issues with that. And so, this lady that just spoke before me, I think, really made a great point in that I think we're talking about lots and lots of children, lots and lots of teachers, and there, no matter what philosophy or model we follow, there's going to be struggles that we have to work through. And my son, who was very, very gifted in math, had to take a math course and stick with that math course each year through high school. He had to follow a very traditional model, and he got the As, and he did all of that. But in English, he followed that same model, and, you know, that was an area that he could have worked on. And, you know, that was an area that he could have worked on a little bit more. When he went to college and it was his freshman English, um, year, you know, his, it, he, he really felt like he was behind in that. So, if he would have had, um, a little bit more, um, personalized learning or customized learning, whatever you would want to call it, he could have perhaps taken his math classes and get, you know, he could have gotten through those and excelled in math and then taken a little bit more English or some of the areas that he needed a little more time in. Um, I also have a daughter who's a freshman and just finished EL, um, her, you know, her freshman year. And we've had some questions and we've reached out to the teachers and said, can you clarify this? Um, she too is a really strong student. And I would say, well, why don't you have more fours? Um, and she would say, I don't know. Well, when we met with the teachers, um, and I said, so does she know? Would she know how to get fours? They said, oh, yeah, remember, it was right here. And I looked at my daughter again, who's a very responsible young lady and she'd hate that I'm talking about her right now. Um, she was like, yeah, I really didn't want to do that. So, it was, I had a very different perspective on it once I met with her and the teachers and asked questions. I just had to keep asking questions. Um, I have a, a student who's in sixth grade, who's going into seventh grade. So, she'll be at the middle school, that's my youngest one now. Um, and she's, she's, you know, going to, she's gonna, she's going to need some more guidance and I'm going to have to be there and I'm going to have to ask questions. Um, but whether it was a traditional model or not, I find like I would have to be asking the teachers questions and, and following through on that. Um, because I have had a son who has gone through the traditional model and some things were wonderful and great and some things we had to work through. I think anytime there is change, we have to make some decisions. And is that we're going to keep working through the, through those struggles? And, or are we going to abandon and pick up something else? Um, you know, it is not a one size fits all. And I do think that no matter what we had, even if we said, let's just all do traditional, um, we're still going to have some kids that are, that will struggle. I have a lot of conversations with my, my, um, fifteen-year-old and, you know, she, she sees the value in a lot. And she'll say, you know, I like this about the way it was before. I like this the way it is now. But one thing she thinks about a lot is, you know, those struggling learners. And a lot of times, the voices that we hear are a lot of, you know, for, um, students that are high achievers. But we have this whole other population that, you know, maybe they didn't get it the first time. Um, and they need a little bit more time to, to master that concept. So, um, I just think that the lady before me just made a really good point about that I think there would be struggles no matter what. This is just new and different and so, we have to make decisions on how we would approach it next. So, thank you.
Thank you. Very good. I'll bring public session to a close and we'll move on. Uh, thank you for those that did speak and it's on the record. Uh, student, uh, information, we've got a report of what's happening at the high school right now. Of course, half of them are gone, right? I mean, you're, and you're done now, right? Everybody's gone.
Yeah. Um, so, we're both in the Leadership Student Council. And, um, before, so, I mean, how do you want to say it? The mentors.
I don't know how long we've, haven't been here. But I think, um, to start, for the Leadership Council, we, like, the seniors standoff before they graduated. I don't know if we talked about that, but I think we like touched on it. But, um, how we set up like little certificates for, um, sen- some of the seniors and like had a, after, because of course, we have the awards with the whole school. And so, after that, we had like a whole little session with just the seniors when we displayed like a slideshow of their skits that they did in the past and like pictures of them off their social media. Um, we did, um, certificates for them, like, uh, certain awards, like butterfly, social butterfly awards or like biggest flirt, stuff like that. Um, and we kind of like made it a bigger thing because we, usually they would just walk out and like you wouldn't see them again after the awards. But we kind of like had them stick around a little bit more. We, so we showed them pictures of the awards. And then after we had the barbecue and they'd all like get their hamburgers and chips and all that stuff. And they hung out and Mr. Gibson was, and Latusha, they were going hardcore. They had like a chef's hat and like a chef's jacket. And Gibson, of course, was being Gibson and hit like Burger King cards. And who was the, um, number ones, who had the number one song when you were, the year you were born? Like, I don't know who would know that, but they got it. And you'd just throw them out cards. And so, they, I think they had a lot of fun. And I think it made it a little bit more special than just them being like, alright, bye, hm, leaving. So, that was nice. And then, um, now.
Do you want to talk about kickoff mentors?
The Student Council is taking over kickoff mentors because before, I feel like it wasn't as, I don't know how to say it, like, it was just kind of hard.
Can you, can you bring that closer? Because I, I heard from some friends of mine who watch and they, you got to really be close to the mic.
It wasn't really enforced as much and I feel that we didn't meet a lot with kickoff mentors. So, we're now taking it over and hopefully, we have close relationships with the incoming freshmen, we're able to guide them more and help them out a little more and be their mentor and meet with them on a weekly basis. And since like this year was the, kind of the experimental year with like the Student Leadership Council, um, we decided to like, since that went, it was such a success and like, there were so many people that wanted to be a part of it that we like, um, wanted to expand, especially since we started taking over kickoff mentors, we obviously need more mentors. So, um, yeah, we took, our, our president, Oliver Hall, made, uh, applications and talked it over with the executive board and they had applications that they handed out, um, to people that wanted to apply. And I think like the guidance counselors and Gibson, Latusha, they're all looking it over. And I think they accepted the people they wanted to today. They, we sent, he sent out a text. Yeah, seventy-five kids. And I think the upcoming freshmen are going to either have to apply after a couple of months of being like watched, I guess, or, um, being selected. But, um, yeah, so, and do you want to?
And what are your summer plans?
Bill talking.
Oh, yeah, sports, working.
Yeah, working.
Yeah.
Summer math.
Alright. Any questions for our student reps? Very good. Superintendent's report, information on?
So, the first item on the agenda is this task force recommendation. So, I know Shelley Mogul and Michelle McCollum are going to present the work of the task force and the recommendations that we will be working on this summer.
So, yes, we, you have some of the information already from, um, members of the task force who spoke earlier. So, some of this might be a little bit repetitive, but, uh, bring you up to date. We, uh, did meet, convene members, diverse membership, uh, for the task force consisting of parents, school committee members, administrators, uh, teachers, uh, who came with a variety of opinions, a variety of perspectives on proficiency-based learning. And as Mrs. Grandin, uh, put out for the task force, the task force was to look at concerns, um, and issues that were being raised with proficiency-based education and our implementation of that. Uh, the first, um, item that we were tasked with was around grading and reporting because that was what overwhelmingly was being heard here in this chambers coming to you as an issue. And it's time-sensitive. If we were going to do something about grading and reporting, we needed to make some decisions very quickly so that we could get moving on it, uh, for the start of the school year. So, that did seem like an appropriate place to start. We had had overwhelming, um, testimony about that here. And so, that was the place that, um, the task that we started with. The survey that was conducted, uh, of both of students, of staff and of parents, that survey, again, because we were up against a time situation, needed to be developed and go out rather quickly. It would have been best to have the task force, and it was the original design, to have the task force develop that. Looking at the time that we had to get that out, um, and hearing from some people about their thoughts about that, we moved forward with putting together a survey. Um, actually, I want to back that up a little bit. It was recommended by one of our teachers that in her class, which class was that?
Was it anthropology class?
Anthropology class. They were working on conducting surveys. And so, this teacher said, my students could develop surveys for this purpose. And so, that did happen. Surveys were developed by the students, um, with input from the teacher. And looking at those surveys, some of them, as you heard, were, uh, needed some tweaking and, uh, some of them, because the questions weren't quite as clear or they followed a different format that maybe wasn't as easily understood. So, there was some, uh, shifting on some of the surveys. I believe the student survey was pretty much.
Student survey was not, I never saw it before it went out. It was designed by those students and, and put out by the students.
Okay. So, just to give you that, and I don't want to go, I'm going further in the weeds than I intended, but just trying to give you some information of things that you heard tonight that may have, that left, may have left you with some questions. So, the survey went out and that became the data set that we started with in our task force. We had an objective data set. We had, well, like I said, we had many diverse opinions and perspectives. And so, uh, the, the data served as an objective place to start the discussion. And so, our first committee did, um, break into some groups, went through a process to identify what the survey was saying. The groups looked at student, a group looked at student, a group looked at the teacher and a group looked at the parent survey. Um, and from there, we went through discussion. Tried to be very open to hearing from everybody in the discussion. Uh, and as you heard, there were many hours. I think the people who, staff, parents, administration, school committee members, who, um, were willing to be open to that process of hearing from everyone, giving everyone an opportunity to have voice and, and to be heard on what they, what they thought. And the attempt was to reach consensus. There was an attempt to reach consensus. Consensus meaning as a decision-making process. It's, it's a process that's used in many different forums, including the United Nations, um, where, uh, when you have a contentious situation or an issue that has many varied, diverse opinions, to come, to try to bring all those opinions to the best possible solution. Not a yes, not a no, but how can we make this work to the best of our ability for the majority of the stakeholders, to the, to the point possible, to the greatest extent possible? So, that was why we went with consensus. It was a pretty straight-up reason. And we attempted that two times to reach consensus and we weren't able to reach consensus. So, consensus meaning everybody could either work for it or could at least live with the decision. And if anybody was down, we went back to, um, the group to discuss that. And so, that, we did that, we tried that twice, it didn't work. We moved to a different decision-making process, a majority decision-making process. And, um, and so, we had the, the recommendations. So, Shelley, what I'd like Shelley to do is just share a document that we developed to try to keep track. We'd see that there was going to be many layers to the, um, issues and concerns that we were going to be addressing on this, um, task force.
So, the first two items in this table are the recommendations that came out of the task force. Just to clarify, we did have consensus on the first recommendation. But it was the second recommendation where we were unable to reach consensus and move to a majority. Um, so, those recommendations, um, were based pretty much on the directive to tackle grading and reporting first and based on the data that came out of the surveys. So, those are to move back to Power School as a reporting platform for grade seven through twelve and to reinstate the traditional grading scale, seven to twelve, and certify proficiency. Between the last meeting and the meeting prior to that, I did go to the leadership team at AMS and the leadership team at the high school to make them aware of the pending recommendations because I felt it was important for them to know that before the school year ended, that, that these were most likely the recommendations coming out of the committee. So, what we talked about, um, was what we needed to do to get started with a plan for implementing those. And so, one of the things that came as a result of that is, um, that I have a group of, I think, six teachers from AMS, six teachers from EL, that are coming Monday of next week to start working on, um, figuring out some of the details of the move back to the, the traditional grading scale and certifying proficiency and to put together a draft of some grading guidelines so that we can get them out early in the summer to teachers for feedback and input and revision and, um, be in a spot where we have that ready for the start of the school year. The first recommendation is gonna, the implementation of that is gonna fall pretty much on the shoulders of tech and, and OLT because there's a lot of work to be done in Power School to set that platform up, um, with the, the targets and, um, all of the nuances of making that change. So, we added this sort of to whom so that we would know who had some responsibility in implementation. And then the other two things you see on here, Power School training was one of the conversations at our last meeting was about making sure that we, that teachers have the training they need to make that platform shift. And, um, Michelle, I think, has already mentioned this or was mentioned in comments that there's an opportunity this summer for, uh, for members of the task force to do some work with the open response comments in the surveys. Because what we used for our data set initially were like the summary charts. Um, and we have, uh, a bunch of open response comments that need to be mined, for lack of a better word, to look for some other trends and other concerns that are repeated, uh, multiple times.
Shelley, uh, question, maybe one of you can answer it. Uh, the survey that was sent out, what, how many were sent? What were the returns? Just so the committee and the community has a sense of the, the response. What, what are we dealing with?
Uh, well, I, when we met the first time and looked at the survey response, there was concern about the number of responses. Um, we talked primarily first about parent, parent responses. I think we ended up, I'd have to, I have to go in and look, but I think we ended up with, um, somewhere near six hundred parent responses. Uh, our teacher response rate was pretty good. I think there were over two hundred teacher responses. We did run into some challenges with, um, the student, the student survey and the timeframe we had and there were some complications because we had a teacher who wasn't, who was out. And so, we, we did the best we could to get as many student responses as we could. If we'd had more time, we could have, you know, improved on that.
And this went out to the parents of, uh, seventh and through ninth?
No, the parents, it went out to all parents.
All parents of all students?
They, and there, the, in the beginning, there were questions about, do you have students in elementary, middle, high school? So that we could disaggregate the data, but that was the response, that's for all parents.
And so, we sent out perhaps eighteen hundred?
We, we, um, sent out information about how to access it. We did have paper copies available in the schools. Very few paper copies went out. Um, the majority of them were filled out via Google.
We have, I mean, I'm, I'm taking a rough guess, but probably eighteen hundred to two thousand parents?
Well, we have thirty-six hundred students.
Yeah, but they're going to multiple children, so I'm thinking a rough estimate, two?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, but two children average, uh, per family, so maybe eighteen hundred. So, we got about a third of our parents represented. I'm, I'm just looking for context. So, let's say a third of our parents responded. That's all I'm looking for. Thank you. Yes, Pat?
Can you reiterate the piece about the department heads and, and your teacher group and what their specific task is and how this is going to, uh, impact teachers in the fall? How, how are we, how is this going to happen fast enough?
Yeah. So, that's the reason that I have scheduled workdays for Monday and Tuesday of next week with the goal being to, um, create grading guidelines, like a grading handbook, so to speak. So, with some details of, of the, uh, traditional grading scale and what that looks like and some explanation around what it means to certify proficiency. That, those groups, I would, my plan is to start with the entire group, seven. That those groups, my plan is to start with the entire group, seven, 12, and have some general conversation and then to allow them to break off into the two school groups and work on writing the information for the schools. They're gonna do a draft that we would then share out to staff. I told Scott to make sure to let his teachers know tomorrow that they should be watching for an email with something to review because we're gonna ask them for input and then let the groups make some adjustments to the draft based on that.
I think that's what I wanted to hear, that everybody was gonna have some input into this and hopefully be ready to go.
And one of the things we talked about when we had the task force meetings is that Power School definitely was easier and saved more time in terms, not as labor-intensive in terms of light time off, away from the students, but too much time on, you know, the actual documentation and inputting. But we did talk about the possibility of how much time would it take if they have to certify proficiency as well as the grading. So that's what I'm looking to teachers to tell us, you know, what the teachers would say. Is it doable and does it make sense? Because we're looking at two finite areas there that we want to measure. Yeah. Because they're the ones that work with it every day and so.
So it's ongoing at this point. Once we have that data set, well, once we make it through this summer, as you alluded to, Pat, get teachers trained, that first month of school, we'll be following up, checking, adjusting to make sure that, you know, getting that feedback on how teachers are moving ahead with this, how this is being communicated to students. This is really an important piece, is communicating this to students. And then, of course, parents. So those are all big wheels, big cogs in the work that has to move forward. And so simultaneously looking at the survey comments so that when we come back in the fall together as task force, we have another data set to look at, to look, you know, where we go in the future.
Right. Because so parents do know, the Power School that they know, it's going to look like that. So even though it's Power School Pro, when that first screen comes up, it will be very familiar. There are the courses, the grades, and then it's mining, you know, it's going down deeper so they can click on the 100-point scale grade to get further information. So we have had a couple of teachers look at Power School Pro and like that there's the balance of both and felt that, they thought it would be much more easily maneuvering around being able to put in information. So very good feedback from the teachers who've seen the possibilities.
Very good. Those who have been already previously trained in Power School, this would be a little different, correct? Because it's been upgraded, so they would require training anyway.
We have a lot of new features that teachers have requested, so that's a very positive.
New and improved.
Get new and improved.
That's a really good point. And part of the feedback will be to continue, the group may say, we want different information back from groups and so we may have further need to survey. And that came up multiple times. Questions for us, other questions?
I had a question. The raw data, who got to look at that? Is that public knowledge?
The data from the surveys is in the folder that the task force has access to. All that we did, I don't want anyone thinking that we chose to excerpt things from the raw data. Well, the only things that were removed were, so when you use a Google form to do a survey, it creates a big spreadsheet. And so there were multiple lines where a person answered, I don't know, or they left it blank. Or they, there were some cases where there was some less than appropriate language and there were some places with identifying information. So those are the things that were, we like removed the empty rows and we took things out that were statements like, I don't know. We did not, everything that was made as a comment in there that doesn't follow one of those categories is still in that data set. And it's in the folder for all of the task force members.
Yep.
I don't have any questions, but there are a few things that I just wanted to comment on if that's, if this is appropriate time. As you, well, number one, I'm very disappointed in our state senate. You know, they just failed us and they've left us all hanging again. And I think that's unconscionable. Shame on them. That said, I have appreciated being a member, representing the council on the task force. And I look forward to continuing that and I want to return to be, you know, to contribute as much as I can. I think it's good to have, you know, all stakeholders involved. And I do commend the construction of a true stakeholder group because we did have a wide range of people and that was great. Because at first I was afraid if we didn't have as many, the more we have, the better representation of all of us. And understanding that the next step is going to be, you know, to mine the surveys, you know, I really, this is a laborious job, but I look forward to doing that. I will volunteer to do it if you will have me on that, on that particular task force or committee or whatever you want to call it. As you worked this summer, I'm, I go back a long way, as you know. And so there are some things that I have noticed over the years and have seen because of student data, student progress, teacher effectiveness and efficacy. There are certain things that still are tried and true. And I hope that, I'm just gonna list a few of them out and I know that we have teachers who are doing this, but it's just to keep these things in mind, that these are really important along with what we're looking at. It's clear that the PBL issue is still not resolved. There are still a lot of issues with that, a lot of pros and cons, no matter who you speak with. But while we look at how we're going to go about teaching and instructing our students and training our teachers, I would like to keep in mind, have you keep in mind that mastery, and I heard that mentioned tonight by one of the presenters, mastery teaching and mastery learning is really effective. The thing about taking a test over and over and over again until you finally reach proficiency, it concerns me because if it has to be done over and over and over, then why are they not getting it the first couple of times? I think that one of the things that we used to do that really makes sense is reviewing, even though they have, one authenticates the proficiency, reviewing current and past skills. It's very important to do that, even though, you know, you authenticate that they're all set with it. It's not necessarily true. There are things sometimes that the kids really don't remember for a long period of time. So I think that particular format of reviewing skills, reviewing standards, just to make sure to touch base, to dipstick, to see, are they still retaining it? Because that's the foundation, that's the building blocks. I truly believe in differentiated instruction, having been a special ed teacher for half of my lifetime in education. Differentiated and direct instruction. I am, and I mentioned it before at one of our other school committee meetings, our students today really need that one-on-one, eye-to-eye, you know, contact with a teacher, with the teacher of the classroom. And we can't forget that that's really, really, truly important. The teacher mentoring and support and guidance through the process of learning is extremely crucial because I am concerned that we're spending so much time having kids learn through the computer, through YouTube, on their own. That really concerns me. And I think that if we focus more on the good old-fashioned standards that we used to use, those are the things that students are listening, are looking for. We heard that from our students who did speak a few meetings ago and a number of meetings ago as well. So, you know, those are some of the things that as teachers discussed how we're going to teach our students, you know, how am I going to teach as a student? How are my students going to learn? These are salient points that still work. And I know I mentioned, you know, the rubrics that we use, the taxonomies, that. That still really, really works. It hasn't gone out of style. So I don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater. Sometimes that will produce a lot more results than any other strategies that we try. So I just wanted to send it out as a reminder so that as you're working with the teachers, bring back those key components that really make a difference. That human contact. I'm so concerned, and we all are, as we see things unfold before us, of students losing it because no one's really communicated with them or contacted them or spent time following up, mentoring, supporting. So that's, that's one of the, these are some of the things that I would hope that you, and I know you will, will cover this during the summertime. And one more thing is that the task force, as the task force works again in the fall, it would be, would be a good idea, I think, to, you know, just let parents know, you know, what the progress is, where we're at, you know? This is what we've covered and we're not, we're not there yet, but this is where we are. So that way, you know, people can still have an opportunity to provide input. And then it would help inform the direction that we go. So thank you very much for all of your work that you've done so far because it's been, it's a difficult job to do and it's a big issue. We're talking about the education of our kids and the direction that we go. And we all have different ideas, but I really appreciate all of your efforts. So thank you for listening.
I just have a question, a clarification. So the recommendation is that we go back to the zero to 100 and do the certification of proficiency. So does that mean that the teachers in the classroom are gonna be doing both the zero to 100 and the one to four? Is that how the?
So what we talked about was trying to find a way to make sure that that isn't what has to be done with every assignment. But sort of thinking through it like this, if we've just finished the instruction and assessment on a learning target, then I, as the teacher, might look at the evidence the student gave me during that instruction and assessment time and then determine if they have met proficiency or not. So that it wouldn't be like every time I give an assignment, I'm giving it two grades. It would be determining, certifying proficiency based on the evidence the student has of their learning during that learning time. That is part of what the group on Monday needs to wrestle with, to find something that's manageable.
Yeah, I think it would be interesting to see with each individual kid, I mean, I know this is a lot of work, but to see with each individual child what their letter grades would be and what their proficiency would be based on that and the data and what that would look like after being collected, to see whether or not.
There's a correlation.
There's a correlation and if each system really, you know, is failing in different areas, so.
Am I correct in remembering that the teachers at one point were doing dual grading?
Correct.
I believe they were doing it, yes.
Yes. In the way that I described, not dual grading every assignment.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Michelle is staying. Yep, she's got me. So this is our annual end of the year data report and Sue and Michelle have been working on that. So I appreciate that they've been very busy with juggling a lot of things. So this is our end of the year student data report. And they're going to be covering our spring data and our teacher effectiveness data. So Michelle is coming around with some handouts and it's nice to be back again sharing data with you. We are gonna be reviewing our district goals tonight and looking at some student data and also talking about our teacher evaluation system and looking at some teacher data. Tonight's presentation is focused around the school committee goals as well as our Title I school-wide goals. And our three primary goals are to strengthen teacher skills, to increase student achievement in reading and to increase student achievement in math. And as I said, I will be starting us off with a review of our spring assessment data and Michelle will follow with an update on our teacher evaluation system and teacher data. So first we'll look at the spring assessment results. And these results are coming from our universal screening. We do our universal screening three times a year. We do this in the fall, in the winter, and the spring. And we're using the STAR assessments. And this is for both kindergarten and first grade through eighth grade. Our students in kindergarten and first grade are using the early literacy assessment. And our students, some of our first graders and then up through eighth grade are using the STAR reading and math assessments. And this is a computer adaptive assessment. It takes about 15 to 20 minutes to administer. And the benchmark does change from fall to winter to spring. So students are expected to improve to reach proficiency in each screening. So this first slide up here is showing you our reading proficiency. And what you're seeing here is the proficiency percentage overall in the fall, where we were at 49%. And then in the winter, moving up to 57%. And now in the spring, we're at 62%. So this is a change of 13 percentage points. And our goal as a district is to reach 65%. So we're working toward that. Last year's percentage was 61%, so we're up one percentage point. This next slide is showing the reading results by grade level. So you can see, just as a reminder, there are two different assessments within this data set. Kindergarten is the early, STAR early literacy. And then first grade is a combination of STAR early literacy and STAR reading. And then past that, it's STAR reading. So what we see here in general is higher proficiency percentages K4 and lower proficiency percentages in grades five through eight.
Sue?
Yes.
Looking at that data, there seems to be a steady decline in terms of as students grow. But have we done the study? Because you've done some research on the mobility and the number of students that come into our district, you know, at the different grade levels. I would anticipate that that would have a significant impact on why, as they go through the grades, that our percentage drops. Because it appears that if we get them, when we start with them, we're very successful, that we are able to teach them, they're at 74, 75% proficient. But as that population gets diluted, I'll say, with non-total, you know, Auburn students, that our percentage proficiency drops. Is that just a fair statement?
I think it definitely does impact our overall achievement. When you look at the number of kids that we have, let's just say, at the end of eighth grade, it's about 50% of the kids that we started with. So there is a lot of in and out. And the in and out doesn't just impact the kids that are moving in or moving out. It impacts all of the students in the system.
Thank you.
This next slide.
Excuse me, I just have one question. For those students, I, I use, my schools were highly mobile.
Yes.
And I always said, if you teach them, they will learn, but it makes a difference when they come to you. If they come to you, don't you find that when they come to you early in the year, that you can really make some adjustments? Especially certain parts of the country, students come from certain parts and they say, oh, they're fine, there's no problem. Then you find out, wow, they're really below grade level. Can you disaggregate that information so you know how many are newbies and how they compare to the kids who we've had ever since, or for the bulk of the time?
You can disaggregate this to some degree next year. I'm hoping that we're going to be able to look further and look closely at mobility in terms of how many years have we had a student? And how are they doing? Because in some of the research, if you have a student for three years, let's just say, you should be able to see an impact there. just say, um, you should be able to see an impact there in the student achievement. So, next year, we, we are going to have a new database, hopefully, that will allow us to look more closely at this information.
One more question, if you have students too who come to you and you know that they're severely below level and they don't qualify for special ed or Title I or anything like that, how, how, what's, what's in place to help support and mentor those students to bring them up to speed, so to speak?
We definitely have a system in, in every building where we're looking at where students are and their learning and we have intervention teams that meet and look at the data and determine what kind of help the child needs and then we make plans to make sure that every child gets the help that they need.
Great, thank you.
So, this, back to this slide right up here, this is looking at changes in reading proficiency by school. So, you can see the fall and the spring and what, what we see here, one of the highlights is Walton. We have.
Wow.
Moving from 36% to 70%.
That's outstanding.
Yes.
Hey, Walton.
And we have a few other schools that you can see with the bars. We see Fairview there and Sherwood there as well and Washburn, all making considerable progress with their students from fall to spring. We'll, we'll see, we don't know. We're, we're having a little technical difficulty. Hang on. Hang on, let's see what we can do here. Just be frozen.
Here she comes to save the day.
Hang on, we'll.
Okay.
Now, let's slow it down.
Forcefully.
Yep. This is my phone. Yes, just call it in.
Sure.
Looks good. Now, am I doing anything here?
Well, just go to the slide that you want.
Yeah.
Okay. You don't present your tools?
No.
Uh, I need my app.
I'll use as a separate display. Oh, yeah, that's fine.
My cookie.
Current, no.
Thank you for your patience.
There we go.
Okay. We are back. Okay, we are going to move into adequate yearly growth. This is also a metric that we're using to measure whether or not we're meeting our goals. Adequate yearly growth results are calculated by using a measure from STAR. We call it the student growth percentile or SGP. And an SGP of 40 or higher represents adequate growth for our students. Our goal is 76% and overall, we are at 69% this year. So, this chart is showing the adequate yearly growth by grade level. So, you can see where we are at each grade level with this measure. And the next slide we will look at will be the adequate yearly growth by school. You can see a range here of 59% to 80%. And there's Walton at 80% and Sherwood Heights, 72%, Fairview 77%, some highlights there. And now, we're going to move on to math. So, this is showing our math proficiency percentages overall. This is grades one through eight. And in the fall, we were at 59%, moving to 65% in the winter and then 67% in the spring. And this is a change of eight percentage points. Our ESEA district-wide goal is 73%, so we are not there yet, but we're working toward that. And last year, we were at 69%, so this is a slight drop from last year. And this next table is showing you our results by grade level. So, you can see that, you know, again, we have higher proficiency percentages in the lower grades and lower proficiency percentages in the upper grades. Next, we have our changes in math proficiency by school. So, you have the fall percentage and then the spring percentage. And once again, we see a large percentage of Walton students moving from non-proficient to proficient. And also, we see notable gains at Sherwood Heights, up 11 percentage points, and Fairview up 12. And moving on, now we're looking at adequate yearly growth. And again, the measure we're using for this is the student growth percentile. And overall, 64% of our students are making adequate yearly growth in math. Our goal here is 73%, so that's what we're working toward. And here, you can see a high of 78%, so we did meet this in a grade level, and a low of 47% in grade eight. And this is the math adequate yearly growth by school. So, we have a range here of 56% to 80% with Fairview up there at 80%. The next slide is just showing a mobility slice. This is grades three through six. And this is getting to the point that, Tom, you were asking about around mobility. What we see is that our students who have been in the system are scoring higher and achieving more than students who are mobile, who have come into the system. So, if we compare our students in grades three through six in reading and we look at the students who moved in versus the students who have been here, there is a difference in the proficiency, 53% versus 64%. And if we look at math, we see a similar difference, although not as much as we see in reading for this particular slice. 57% of our students who have moved into the system are proficient in math versus 64% for their students that have been here since kindergarten. So, moving along, these are just a few highlights and celebrations. Student proficiency in reading and math has increased since the fall and our overall reading proficiency improved from last year. And over 60% of our students are making adequate yearly growth. And as I've spoken to in some of the other presentations, some of our challenges are around mobility, poverty, trauma, and we talk about the summer slide, which is where student achievement and student progress in reading and math regresses over the summer. So, these are the different action steps that we're taking to increase student achievement. These are all part of our district plan. We are implementing standards-based instruction. We have a coherent curriculum in, and then this is housed in Empower. So, when we talk about Empower, that's where it's housed. This is a pre-K to 12 curriculum with learning progressions. We're focusing on increasing the rigor of instruction. And at the elementary level, we are implementing some research-based programs. This year, we implemented the Lucy Cawkins Writing Program and we are piloting and working toward implementing the Lucy Cawkins Reading Program. Another step that we're taking and that we've been doing is to provide high-quality interventions, especially in the primary grades where we really want to focus on reading. It's really important to have all of our students reading by the end of third grade and that's our goal. So, we have trained interventionists. And when I speak to you about the Title I programming, uh, this is what I'm talking about. This is what our interventionists are doing. They're doing reading recovery, literacy lessons, things like that. Another step that we have been taking and working toward is fostering a safe school culture. And this is hitting a lot of different areas. This is about our work around trauma and making sure that we're trauma-informed schools, that we know how to help kids who are dealing with trauma and also how to help our kids that are coming from poverty. And another thing that we've done this year is we've been working with positive behavior intervention and supports. We have two behavior specialists, consultants that we work with and they've been working with schools and teachers to address the needs of students, especially those with challenging behaviors, and also to look at our entire school-wide system of support for students. And last, oh, not last, increasing family engagement is another focus area and that is especially for our Title I schools. We do a lot of different activities to involve and engage our families. And the focus now is really on increasing parent engagement versus sort of the old model around involvement. We want to increase engagement in student learning. And last but not least is strengthening teacher skills and this is the piece that Michelle is going to be talking about next. We are using Marzano's instructional framework. This is a professional curriculum for all of our teachers and with that, we're providing ongoing professional development. We have some instructional coaches to support this work and this is all having to do with our PEPG system. So, with that said, I'm going to turn this over to Michelle and we.
Let's see if there are any questions for you.
Oh, yeah, sure, let's, if there's any questions, I am happy to answer them.
I would like to make comment. This is like the 100-foot viewpoint and then we drill down, you know, teacher by teacher, grade by grade, student by student. So, this is, you know, we could drill down and say, well, how does each grade do at each school? How does each teacher do at each grade at each school? How do students do in each? So, this is your big, but we drill down right from the student level all the way up. So, we do a lot of discussion around what's happening in this classroom with those results are doing well, what's happening here, what's happening in this grade, what's happening with our curriculum, looking at our alignment to our targets and our instruction. So, there's a lot of work being done.
That happens during the time release and/or team, team teaching time?
Correct, yes.
Great.
So, on to the next section as Sue talked about, the importance of teacher effectiveness in our work is paramount and it's key to, to what we're doing to try to raise student achievement. I want to just remind you before we, we go a little bit further, there are two parts to the teacher evaluation system. There's the student growth piece and you heard Sue talk about that adequate yearly growth chart that you have in front of you. That's what that's referring to. So, the teachers are actually, as part of their evaluation, looking at their student data and saying, have those students made adequate growth under my instruction? Okay, so that's one section and that's, we could see from where Sue presented, how that looked. And then the second piece is the instructional practices and that's what I'm going to focus on in, in this section of the, of the presentation, so. Maybe, okay. So, to remind you, teacher effectiveness. Research shows that effective teachers have direct and positive impact on student learning and growth. So, what does that mean? That means by spending time increasing teacher effectiveness is this, that's going to be our single most important factor in raising student achievement. And so, we need to assure that every teacher has the opportunity to grow through focused feedback and that we provide ongoing professional development based on research-based best practice. So, you heard Sue again talking about the framework, the professional curriculum, just like we have a student, a curriculum for our student. Okay, somebody push buttons.
Not eight yet.
We got it.
Or nine, I should say. Every hour, I think it starts to go, yeah.
And just like we have a student curriculum that's focused, well thought out, focused and sequenced, we have a professional curriculum for the first time for our teachers that is clearly articulated what best practices are and what will lead to increased student achievement. So, this year, as some of you have been on the committee for a while and you've heard me up here talking about this before, uh, it's been a progression. Another law that came along and said, you have an evaluation system, but there are certain components that you need to have in your evaluation system and you need to spend this time, they brought it in over years, gave us a few years to, to get that up and running, uh, to put together your system and then to use it. We are in our first year, I'll remind you, this was our, this past year was our first year where teachers were evaluated, not under a pilot, but fully under the evaluation system. So, the, the curriculum, the part of the framework that we were focused on this year, we're in these three areas primarily. So, transparency of learning, and you can see there, conditions for learning, that's what goes on in the classrooms to make sure that it's conducive, the environment is conducive, the climate and culture is conducive for a rigorous learning experience. And then the professional responsibilities that all teachers, certainly we, are expected to develop and perform. Those were the focus areas. To remind you, again, some of you have seen this slide before, actually, I think all of you have, this is from Eye Observation. It's the platform that houses the curriculum, if you will, and it's used for that focused feedback cycle between the evaluator and the teacher. So, it's a efficiency piece that allows the evaluator, the framework in front of them, what are some of the look-for's there, an area, more importantly, an area for comments, direct comments, so he can give feedback. And you can see in the corner, I put a copy of the scale there. That's the scale that we give the focused feedback, formative, very specific about checklist of things, what, what do I see, what are some things you could be doing? And then an overall scale for that particular element saying, okay, where are you in your progression of learning? In your progression of implementing that particular strategy in your classroom? So, it's a two-part evaluation piece, feedback piece. And the scale's important for the next slide. How are our teachers doing? So, just like we look at, Katie said, we look at student data, we look at how our teachers are doing and that's formative for us in so many ways, both at the district level, but more importantly, I would say our principals are using this as well as individual teachers and their learning teams. So, when we look at the elements that we required for evaluation this year and looked at how our teachers were doing, you can see clearly there, yeah, what this is saying. So, what you have on the side there is the, the beginning is the little yellow at the bottom in most of these and in some, not at all. Developing is the orange, green, applying and innovating. So, if you think of it. So, if you think of it as like a one to four scale that we've talked about with our students, one being beginning, four being innovated, if that's easier to think about it. So, if you look at the green and the red, you can get a sense of how our teachers are performing and implementing. I want to remind you that the school committee had a goal around this, around teacher effectiveness. And our school, our Title I grant, our ESEA grant goal, was seventy-five percent of our teachers will score as effective. So, when you start to look at these numbers here, you can see that teachers are implementing to a high degree, as we would expect them to. Questions on this slide?
What's the number in the red?
Uh, the number in the red? It's just the, it's the percentage that scored innovating. And you can't see the number in the green. Yep, it's the percent. Mm-hmm, yeah. And you can't see the number in the green, but I think you can.
I see it now that you're saying that, yes.
I think you can see it on your slide.
We can see the numbers on our slide.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Note to self, green and the white doesn't work well.
Correct. Can I ask a question? There's a, there seems to be a huge gap between, in the green section. Can you explain that?
So, a gap? I'm not sure what you mean, but the-
It seems like there's, you go from below twenty percent-
Twenty, yeah.
-to over eighty percent.
So, let me read that, let me read what that's saying. So, on that first, it won't show up. On the, on the planning element, so that, that's about teachers planning, using standards. There were, I'm going to guess about maybe four percent who scored at beginning. Now, remember, these are all teachers. These are our teachers who are coming in new to us, including our veteran teachers. So, developing, if we move up to that orange, that's about, oh, I can't remember. Let's just, if you will allow me, ten percent? I don't have that number in front of me. It's probably not even ten, it's less than ten percent for that orange. Are developing. So, and in this scale, if we had spent more time in the, in the scale, developing means the teacher is demonstrating that particular element, but it's not having the desired effect. Okay, so we have to look at what the desired effect of your planning is. Is it implemented in your classroom, in this case, would be? So, you have a plan, you have a unit plan, a lesson plan, and a unit plan. Is that actually what's taking place in your classroom? Is there a correlation between those plans? What you intend to accomplish and what you actually accomplish in your classroom, right? And then the green is applying, and that's your three. That means you have a plan, you're meeting what that element, the planning element calls for, and your desired effect is demonstrated. So, that's what we want. We want them scoring in the green. And there's seventy-one percent are scoring at that three level, that applying level.
So, from ten percent to eighty?
It's the graph itself that's confusing.
Yeah.
It's really clear to me, but thank you, Pat. That I will, I'll think about another way to-
The green is the largest percentage, that's why the color is the largest.
Right.
Because the way it looked, she asked a great question, because I was going to ask the same one. It looks like, you know-
Pie chart would have been-
Somewhere at the ten percent and somewhere at the eighty percent.
I'll think about that one next time. Last time, it worked for us, I used the same, same method, but I'll, I'll see if I can't get better at it. And then sixteen percent are scoring at that innovating, they call it innovating, it's a four. So, you have a total of, quick math, eighty-seven percent who are proficient or above in the element.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you, that makes more sense.
Okay, good. I have another chart, let's see if it works better. But other questions before we go on?
Nope.
All right. So, how does this look compared to last year? Last year, we were in a pilot, but that pilot, I remind you, all, almost all teachers were evaluated last year in the, in the final year of our pilot. So, we took a look at some of the elements that were like between last year and this year. And you can see, and these are just those who scored at proficient or above. Okay, so you can see the orange line is last year. And we had under sixty percent scoring, for example, on the goals and scales. This year, we have eighty percent teachers who are implementing that goals and scales element as expected or above. Okay? So, you can see, just if you like to get specific in the numbers, you can see it, or you can just see the trend. And it was interesting to put this graph together, because when I looked at, okay, we had a gap last year, and, you know, we've certainly increased. And then some, we've scored about the same, even though they're high and they're in the ninety percent. Routines in the PDCA, let me tell you just a little bit about that. Routines are classroom management. Those are the things that are happening in the classroom around classroom climate and culture that allows learning to take place. So, there's not a lot of disruption, it's efficient.
Those are the standing operating procedures, the code of cooperation.
Students know what they're to do, and they do it, right? Those, all those things, the code of cooperation, the SOPs, help the efficiencies, right? So, when we think about that, we would, teachers come in to us from the first year on, working on developing a climate and culture that's going to be conducive for learning, right? So, that classroom management, they've been doing that before we even brought on our new framework, Marzano, or work with Marzano. Also, the PDCA's, we've tweaked it in the last few years, but they were used to setting goals and monitoring their progress toward those goals. So, that wasn't entirely new. Okay, so, they were high to begin with, and they've stayed high, and we're going to continue to increase the number, numbers there. The first three, the goals, tracking, and celebrating, that was a paradigm shift that came along with our work with Marzano and also in our work toward our Vision 2020 in customizing learning. So, that conduce, that transparency of learning was, is, was key. And so, that was new, and we needed to do a lot of professional development with that. And elementary spent a lot of time, and still do, focused on that in their Wednesday afternoons. So, I found that interesting, I thought that was an interesting little piece.
How do teachers feel about this new pilot, this new evaluation system?
Well, I can tell you what I think they think. We, we survey them every year. Sue and, Sue and I get feedback from them about what's working and what's not. And then our steering committee goes about making adjustments as, as needed. I don't want to give you a blanket statement, but I, I think overall, they see the benefits of an articulated curriculum for them. They know what the expectations are, they're getting feedback at least twice a year on using this. It's not coming in, you're into literacy and I'm into behavior, and as the evaluator, we, we look for different things. It's now clear, and it's in a feedback form that is easily accessible. So, yeah, I, I think for the most part, and then the professional development piece being tied directly to it, a growth plan tied directly to it, I think has made things very clear for teachers in terms of, of growing.
Yeah, the expected outcome is usually that teaches, we all hope that, you know, me having been one of them too, is that we keep going up to the upper levels and challenging ourselves at the upper levels and as we go along. So, does this, you know, assist that?
Yeah, I think that, I can answer it more easily. I hear testimony from our evaluate, our administrators frequently of teachers who scored at a three, that applying level, who are coming back to their administrator saying, come back in. I, I took that feedback you gave me, and I want you to see what I'm doing now, because I think I might be getting to that innovating.
That's good. It was exciting to hear on the task force, the various teachers around the table at the various levels, they're really excited about their teaching. And they're proud of what they do, and that's what their love is, their first love is to teach the students, so.
Yes.
That's kind of like, goes back to what I had said a little earlier, so that's why I'm picking that up.
And I think they get feedback around that, in that way.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Other? So, some highlights, we've talked about it. Teachers have a clearly articulated professional curriculum. The professional curriculum is focused on the instructional, professional development is now focused on the instructional framework, very clear. There's ongoing regular feedback to support that growth. And subsequently, we're seeing teachers have improved their instructional professional practices. And then some challenges. Time. It takes time to get that feedback and to actualize that feedback in classrooms. Professional development is key. It's, it's happening, but it's always a challenge because of time. And I'll remind you that when I was here in January of last school year, and we were talking about this, we had teachers here who were a part of that conversation in principals, and they talked about time particularly at the secondary level. And that was the beginning of the conversation about providing more professional development time to secondary teachers for this purpose. So, just to remind you of that. And we want to continue to customize that, provide regular professional development, and bring in more teachers to have that be teacher-led. So, questions for me or for Sue? Happy to answer.
I know you mentioned, are they evaluated twice a year, is that?
So, they have, they have feedback at least twice a year. They're on different cycles, yearly cycles. So, our probationary teachers are evaluated, they receive a summative rating every year. And some of our teachers who may be experiencing some difficulty, they may be on a more frequent yearly basis or two-year basis. Otherwise, they're on a three-year cycle. So, they're receiving feedback every year, twice a year, and then they receive a summative rating once every three years.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item, Adam is going to review our flexible benefit plan that needs to be approved.
Yes, so, as we approach July 1st, we need the school board to essentially re-adopt our flexible benefits plan. This is a plan that was originally put in place in July of 2011. And as significant changes to the plan happen, it needs to be re-adopted. So, the only real change here is that this plan had been available previously to some groups of employees. It's now available to all employee groups. We have two plans, a plan a year that runs July through June, and one that runs September through August. So, the plan you're voting on tonight is the July-through-June plan. And we just need the motion that's in your, that's on the agenda to be adopted.
Any questions? I'd accept a motion to approve the amended cafeteria plan, including the health flexible spending account, independent care flexibility spending account, effective July 1st of this year. I'd authorize the superintendent and business manager to execute and deliver to the administrator the plan, one or more counterparts of the plan. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Dan. Any further questions? All those in favor? You're animus, thank you.
Next is the finance report for May 2018. And Adam, you're the person that's here from Finance Committee.
Yes, so, we met on Monday and reviewed where things stood at the end of May. And I'm happy to say, I think we're in pretty good shape as far as ending the year within our budget. I'll continue to watch things very closely over the next two weeks as we get all of our payroll posted and as all of our June invoices come in. But we had a couple of positive developments on the revenue side. Our main care revenue is coming in higher than I had perhaps anticipated. It's a bit hard to predict, but we just received a pretty big payment this week. So, that's going to help us moving forward. And one of our major special education expenses, which is the main care seed component, we've received the fourth and final quarter of that, and that has come in within our budget. And that's a very volatile thing every year, as I'm sure you've heard before. So, those are a couple of positive developments. Again, I think we'll be looking good to be within our budget, and we'll have an update for you when we see where things ended up.
Are we in danger of having to move anything more than five percent?
We will definitely have a couple of cost centers that go over budget, and we'll need to shift some five, do some shifting of five percent between cost centers.
So, that will come before the board? Anything that requires that larger shift comes before the board? So, you'll see that probably in July?
It'll be August or September. Once we, I want to make sure I have the final numbers before I bring that to you.
All right, but beyond that, it looks like we're going to be within budget and add to our fund balance, perhaps?
Yeah, anything we come in under or any, any more revenue we receive will help our fund balance, which is a good thing.
Any questions for Adam? Very good, Adam. Entertained a motion to accept the finance report as presented?
So moved.
Second? Further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. And which committees have met?
I apologize, it appears Ross didn't copy it.
I was just going to say, is he coming back?
But she did, she copied, and yeah. Adam and I didn't pick up on the names not being right.
Yeah, yes, I guess so.
So, ignore that.
My answer is our city council, we'll start with you anyway.
Okay, thank you very much. The two big things, and there were a few announcements I'll make on the city side, things that are happening around the city. But the two big things that are happening is that we've passed the budget, hallelujah. I have a few nights now for the next few weeks. The other one is the 150th anniversary of our city. And there's a, you know, if anyone is interested in participating in any of the subcommittees as well as the major committee, God bless you. There's a lot to plan for, and we would love to have a really great celebration. It's not just a one-day thing, there are a lot of things that are, are in the works. So, if anybody here is interested or anybody listening via TV, if you're interested at all, at all, just contact the mayor or the city manager. And we would love to have some assistance with that, if anybody's interested in that. The library board of trustees is another group that I belong to, and we, we meet once a month at 7:30 in the morning, this morning. So, I'm ready to go to bed. But anyway, the, we still have concerns about parking, and we've formed a subcommittee of three of us, because we want to work with, you know, the manager. Doug has left, and he was the one who was working on that plan and revising possibilities for parking for the library. But it's not only the library, it's, we have two big buildings that are, one is in the process of being built right now on Spring Street, and the other one will be on Troy Street. So, we're going to have an issue with parking, period. So, that's something that's going on right now. The Vietnam vets are having an appreciation barbecue on Thursday this week, the 21st, from 11 to 3 at the Lewiston Vet Center. All welcome, it's on 35 Westminster Street in Lewiston. There are various neighborhood watches, I don't know if any of you attend the watches. I can't attend them all because there's so many, but, you know, we have clusters of neighborhoods. The neighborhood around the congregational church, that, that neighborhood watch is also tomorrow at 6:30. Saturday, Raleigh's, at Raleigh's from 9 to 2, there's going to be a yard sale and a puddle drive. And it's all to help restore the popcorn, Marshall's popcorn truck. And I remember going to that when I first moved here, all those many years ago. So, see, she doesn't know because she's too young. I have a picture of that, a Dan Cake sketch of the popcorn stand. You could smell popcorn on Sundays, and it was right there in front of the, it was housed in front of the, the county building. And every Sunday, you could smell popcorn all over the place here. And it was a little guy selling popcorn at the Marshall popcorn stand. And it was a little truck, old-fashioned truck, and he had a big popcorn machine. So, those, yeah, I'm admitting that I attended, so you know how old I am now. Lewiston Middle School is going to have a really important discussion, and those of you who are interested, on Thursday, the 28th, from 6 to 8. It's regarding the opioid epidemic, and I think it's a pretty timely discussion. So, if anybody's interested in that, or know of anyone, please let them know. Again, that's Lewiston Middle School, 6 to 8. And, oh, on Monday, the 2nd of July, we are having our city council meeting, and it's usually at 5:30 for workshops. But prior to that, the press is going to be there to, you know, unveil the official- But prior to that, the press is going to be there to, you know, unveil the, official unveiling of the 150th celebration. But also, we have a new, there'll be a new city insignia. So they're unveiling the new insignia, so we'll see what it's going to look like. And a ribbon cutting also is taking place on Monday, the 9th, 11:30 to 1. And this is a, a new special location. It's called Journey House Recovery. It's, it houses stu, people who have substance abuse disorders. And it's for the Andes Goggin County in general. But they're having a ribbon cutting and a barbecue. And it's on 77 Oak Street, Lewiston. And that's again, Monday, the 9th, from 11:30 to 1. So that's it for events and happenings around the city. Thank you.
Oh, Frida, the LMS opioid that you had stated, what day is that on?
Oh, okay. Hold on.
Thursday, the-
Thursday, the 28th.
Thank you.
6 to 8. There's a lot going on right now.
Good.
That's it, thank you.
Leverage Learning is scheduled for November, it's a two-day conference this year, November 8th and 9th, if I get that right, Thursday, Friday. We have the sessions all planned. Early board registration is out, we're encouraging those that have attended before. Notices have been sent to them, see if they'd like to end again. The theme is, how do you actually make things, create things within, with technology in the classroom? So apps and things that are useful for creating storyboards, stories, video, that type of thing. All creative type focus, so that's, that's coming up. It's been a very successful institute for, I don't know how many years, five years now, I believe. And I look forward to a new one, another one. The communications?
No.
Curriculum? No, CLC?
No.
Wellness? Audit, no, Transportation, Dan, and Share, I think we're done. Oh, the New EL. We've had visits to Sanford, yes, no, Monday. Monday, we visited Sanford. There've been groups going to Mount Blue and Hamden Academy, looking at relatively new schools for ideas on the New EL and what components we'd like to incorporate in a new design. Elements that address the, the needs for curriculum, but also for student safety, as well as infrastructure in terms of systems heating or cooling, that type of thing. Building on vault appearance. Just, the committee's been getting ideas and sharing those with the architects. And hopefully, as we move forward, those ideas that really resonated with the community and the architects will be reflected in design. But that is moving forward and expect an announcement, I guess, coming up this Friday. So look for that. Upcoming meetings, July 11th and 25th and August 8th, all starting at 6 o'clock. So remember that, the summer schedule gets in at 6, hopefully out early.
I do want to, I didn't, because this wasn't confirmed. July 25th, we'll start at 6 for hiring. And then Harriman Architects will be here on the 25th for a workshop, following the regular meeting for hiring, to go over where they are in the process, talk about the educational specifications. So you'll be looking at that. And because in your meeting on August 27, 22nd? You'll be approving the educational specifications. But July 25th, I will not be here, I will be on vacation. But Michelle is going to facilitate that and Adam and Shelley will support the Harriman workshop and Tom and, you know, Bonnie, those people who are on the building committee. So that will happen on the 25th, so we'll update that. Harriman will be here to update.
All right, future agenda items, please bring them to my attention. There's the field trip policy that we may be discussing.
We'll probably do that after we see what happens as a result of what occurred with the Lewiston Middle School student. So we'll probably review that in September. As we hear what there may be changes coming.
We have no need for an executive session this evening, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor, declare to adjourn, 9:20.